Welcome to the Tuesday, October 12th, 2021, meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. Just a reminder that all votes while participating remotely must be made by roll call vote. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll start with correspondence, so I will throw it over to Nicole.
Thank you. The school committee received the following correspondence this week. A memo from Mr. Donald Jarvis, Director of CTEC, dated September 30th, 2021, regarding Walter E. Quigley Jr., Student of the Month Awards for September 2021. There were no Long Meadows students honored this month. A letter from Ms. Linda Markarian, dated October 1st, 2021, regarding crossing guards on the Long Meadow Town Hall.
Thank you, Nicole. We will move to approval of the minutes, and there is a possible motion.
I move that the school committee approve the minutes for the September 28th, 2021, school committee meeting as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will move to a vote. Nicole?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Runway?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me? All right, we will move to visitor comments. And just a reminder on visitor comments. We will have three-minute time limit, and you are limited to one three-minute time. And if there's anybody who would like to make a comment, please raise your virtual hand or your actual hand. Do we have any visitors who would like to make comments tonight? All right, seeing none, we will move on to school committee announcements and recognitions. Gianna, go ahead.
Thank you, Kevin. I just wanted to congratulate Williams Middle School on the great efforts that are going on over there. They are in the process of putting together, the students are in the process of putting together the student-led conferences, so that's super exciting. I think Superintendent's going to touch on that a little bit. But they're also working on some great digital citizenship efforts, and they're partnering with the Hammond County District Attorney's Office on some ways to help our students and families come together to promote safer communities and environments. So great stuff coming out of Williams Middle School. Thank you, Williams students, families, and educators.
Thank you, Gianna. Mary, go ahead.
A great shout out to everyone who participated in the Center School Carnival that took place a couple of weeks ago. The original date was reined out, but the next date, it was a beautiful evening. I was speaking with Mrs. Hutton, who said, "Look, the families are lingering." And it was kind of nearing the end, and no one wanted to leave. And I think it just goes to show how happy people were to be together again. The fifth graders were so enthusiastic and excited about their projects. I was at the grill, and that was an experience. It was just very celebratory and really nice to see so many families come out and enjoy the night.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mary. Other announcements, comments? All right, we will move on to business with guests. The school committee's Student Advisory Council, Dagan, take it away.
You good to go? Everything all right? Okay. So on your agenda, you should see the first thing. The Student Advisory Council, one, welcome all. If they could please say their names, you can go first, whoever wants to go first. Obviously, you guys know, I'm Dagan Conley, I'm the full-time representative. Who would like to go next?
I can.
Oh, there we go.
I'm Madeline Busolari, and I'm the part-time representative on the school committee's Student Advisory Council.
I'm Charles Lee, and I'm a part-time representative.
I'm Katie Goodhans, and I'm also a part-time representative.
Sick. So, first thing that we would like to talk about is, if I can pull it up. Is, we are starting a new marketing campaign, so the student, the school committee, Student Advisory Council has a virtual suggestion box for students, just like you guys have correspondence for the committee. We have our own form of correspondence where students can go through the LHS website and give us their comments on what issues they'd like. You know, you guys see me once every two weeks, you know, come up here, bringing the issues of LHS to you guys. And so do my colleagues on Zoom here. So we are starting a marketing campaign that would be dealing with, you know, stuff on the LHS website, classes pushing that out on the TVs and the cafeteria and posters around LHS. That's something we are currently working on. Anything to add on that, guys? Did I basically cover that right? Sick. All right. So another thing that we can talk about is the seating at lunch. We have talked about, I know LPVC has built tables, we thank them very much. You know, kids at CTEC have been building tables, the tables are actually finally coming in, which is great. Students are very much appreciative of the outside seating, as the weather, especially today, was beautiful. So a lot of them are taking taking steps to go outside. And also, as it goes more towards winter, we are hoping, and we are seeing from our student body, that they are going to cope with the situation, you know, it's not going to be ideal, not everything's ideal, but everyone's going to do their part, you know, stay safe, six feet apart, and moving into the winter, that's what we're going to do. So, next thing, we're going to talk about clubs, I believe, Maddie, that's you.
Yep, so I'm going to be speaking on clubs within the LHS community. And first is Key Club. The Key Club is volunteering with the Greater Springfield Community Out of the Darkness Walk for Suicide Prevention, and that is on October 23rd in Agawam. They're also volunteering at the Leaf Gala, which is November 6th, and the Springfield Elks Club Nationality Night. And the Key Club is going to be hosting a virtual fundraiser for UNICEF, which is the United Nations Children's Fund. And then for Stan Club, which is Students Together Against Negative Decisions, is sponsoring a parent panel with LHS parents at the Food Truck Thursday event at LHS on October 14th with Rick Cressa and Closed Community. And they will be talking about youth marijuana use. And there are four new clubs that have been recently initiated at LHS, and they are the Environmental Club, Jewish Student Union, Females Allied to Empowerment, aka FATE, and Amnesty International. And that's all for today.
Awesome, thank you, Maddie. I have the pleasure of talking about LHS athletics, the biggest thing in our school, I'd have to say. I believe about 85% of the students participate in athletics, so it's a big part for us. Obviously, guys, you know, some of you have students at the LHS level who just played in these sports. Just going to give you a snapshot, so one, just for me, football is now one and three, finally. We finally won a game against Chico Camp, 36 to 0. And God, I finally got to play too, it's awesome. The golf team has now qualified for the Western Mass Championship, so kudos to those guys. The boys' cross-country team has gone undefeated in their meets and will be competing, compete today, I believe, against Amherst. I have yet to see the score from that. And the boys' soccer team is 3-4-3 with their defeat by Belchertown yesterday. So that is it for athletics. Charles and Katie, do one of you guys have student activities?
Sure, I can do activities. So throughout the year, LHS has already made many great strides to try and keep as many events and class activities in person as possible while we're dealing with COVID. But as of right now, all senior activities are planned as usual. So that's High Meadows, Prom, and Graduation are all planned to take place later this year. And LHS has also chosen their senior class play and their drama club class play. And so Shrek is the class play for senior class play, and Mamma Mia will take place later this year for the drama club. And also sophomore events are still planned to take place, so that's semi and lock-in. And also, the Stroll for Strength will take place on November 22nd.
And just to add on to the school activities report, on October 22nd, there will be a junior dinner and dance at Twin Hills Country Club. And in the next two months, there will also be two concerts, a chamber concert on October 27th, and a fall concert on November 23rd.
Thank you, Charles. So that would be about it for us for telling you guys what's going on. Do you have any questions for any of us on the climate of LHS?
All right, just thanks to all of you. It's always great to have our student leaders join us. And obviously, Dagan is with us all the time, but it's great to see Maddie and Charles and Katie joining us as well. And thank you for taking the time, committee members. Any comments or questions for our student representatives? So Gianna, before you jump in, I see that Mr. Dunkley would like to make a comment. So yes, of course, Mr. Dunkley, you're always welcome to make a comment.
Thanks very much. I just wanted to make a quick correction. We have decided to postpone the sophomore semi from this October to next spring, date to be determined. When we looked at that just recently with the sophomore class, everybody was in agreement that being indoors with masks on for this event just wasn't going to be ideal. So we're hoping that the COVID numbers become such that we can hold this event at Twin Hills in the spring and have it be business as usual. So please stay tuned for an update on that. Thanks so much for letting me jump in.
Thank you for the clarification. Gianna, please.
I just wanted to thank all of you students, and thank you, Mr. Dunkley, for guiding them. But I was particularly, just wanted to say thank you for your positive energy and your eye to, you know, as Dagan was saying, you know, you're going to be collecting data about issues that might be of concern to students and families. And I just love that it seems like already you're going to collect data on those concerns, but also think about ways to offer resolutions for that. That's always important when you're hearing issues and concerns. And you don't just sit with them and complain about them, you want to take it, you want to do something positive with them, and bring, you know, again, ideas, brainstorm, resolutions to those concerns. So I just appreciate that.
Thank you, Gianna. Any other comments or questions for the student reps? All right, thank you. Again, great to see you guys, and I know we'll be seeing you in the future, and I know you will have more to tell us. So thanks again for all of your work, and we'll look forward to seeing all of you soon. All right, so we are now on to administrative reports. Superintendent, report is first.
Thank you, and I'd echo what Kevin and Gianna said. Just appreciate the work of our students. They make this a fun place to work, and Mr. Dunkley did a great job guiding them and challenging them and pushing them to greater accomplishments. So thank you, Paul. Few items for you in your superintendent's report that I had included in the packet. I've included some of the health and safety data that we're accustomed to looking at. At the date that this report was written, we had 11 active cases in the town, so that's as low as I've seen in some time. It's a very encouraging number, so thanks to everybody for taking all the precautions that allow us to keep the number of active cases down, which in turn allows us to run schools the way we have been this year. So thank you to everyone. Last week, as many of you know, was Workplace Mental Health Week or Mental Health Awareness Week, rather. And so just as we are attentive to the social emotional needs of students, we also want to be sure that we are attentive to the social emotional needs of staff. And this is something that many organizations in, you know, both the private sector and the public sector have been talking about, and that is the challenges that workers are facing as we sort of return to, you know, some level of normalcy while still dealing with the after effects of the worst parts of the pandemic. And so I had included in your packet and our essay from Education Week titled "Teachers Not Okay Even Though We Need Them To Be." And I thought it really did a nice job of kind of capturing where teachers are across the nation right now. And, you know, they are working hard to reacclimate students to learning patterns and while catching them up academically. And so it's, it has been, it's been a challenging year in that sense. And so we have an upcoming professional development day on November 12th, and we think that that will provide us with some really valuable collaborative time and opportunity for teachers to sort of get together to talk about, you know, the challenges that they're facing and strategies that they're using to face those challenges. So I appreciate the committee's attention to that essay that I had included in your packet. On a really encouraging note, I wanted to share with you an update on the LHS Career Education Program. There's a listing of the placements that our students are enjoying this year. We've got about a dozen students or so right now who are experiencing internships. We expect that next semester, another 12 to 15 students will participate in the internships. What I'm really impressed about by this list is the variety of placements that, you know, really so many sectors of the economy are represented, and I think it shows us that kids are really eager to have those real-life experiences, those work-based learning opportunities. And so, you know, the program is just getting started. Credit to Mr. Landers, the administrators at the high school, and Aaron Corbett, who are doing an amazing job getting that program up and running. And so if anybody at home is listening and you'd be interested in taking on an LHS student as an intern, let us know. I'm sure we can find a student to match whatever organization you happen to be with. As part of that, the high school is also introducing a lunchtime career speaker series. And again, it's reflective of that sort of comprehensive approach to career education, that career education truly works along a spectrum of opportunities. It's not just about internships, but it's really about exposing students to career opportunities and maybe lighting some fires that can ignite academic passions as well. So that's the Career Education Program, and we're excited to see that grow quickly in its early stages and look forward to future growth as well with that program. Diagnostic testing, you've probably seen the communication that we've sent to families. The diagnostic testing program is up and running at all six schools. The testing materials are in, everyone has their login credentials, the database is being accessed, the protocols and parameters of the testing have been established. And when I wrote this, about 1,800 individuals in our school system had consented to the testing program. I suspect that number is much higher at this point, but, you know, we're excited to have that diagnostic testing program up and running. Right now, it's quiet. We'll look at, you know, ways that we can leverage that resource to, you know, provide further safety for our students and our staff and our families. So the middle school statement of interest had some, I'd say, encouraging conversations with some senior staff at the Massachusetts School Building Authority in recent weeks. They have notified us that our application on our two middle schools are in the sort of further review pile, which is encouraging. And as part of that, I expect that they will want to reach out to this committee, school officials, town officials, to conduct some additional due diligence and some additional review of our application. And having consulted with Kevin, I had invited Matt Donovan, who is a senior administrator at the MSBA, and invited him to an upcoming school committee meeting and hoping to hear back from him at some point soon. I think that in the days, weeks, months ahead, I think it would be important for us to continue to bring this community up to speed on the needs, facility-related needs of our middle schools. And so I hope, you know, that we'll, you know, would invite the committee to be part of those discussions, and I hope to sort of bring that conversation on the road to our families in the days ahead. So that's our statements of interest to the MSBA. And then finally, Gianna made reference to this earlier, fall teacher-parent conferences are nearly upon us. And one of the positive effects of the challenging year we experienced last year was everyone's proficiency with Zoom. So upon request, families can access Zoom-based parent-teacher conferences. Largely, families are still preferring to be with us face-to-face, which is great. I think that's our preferred approach. But we want to make those conferences accessible where we can. And credit to Williams Middle School for piloting the idea of student-led conferences. It's a great way to kind of put kids in charge of their own learning, to engage them with their teachers and with their parents on where they stand academically and how they could continue to grow. So thank you to Williams Middle School for piloting that, and Glenbrook will certainly learn from that experience as well. That said, there's one item that's not on your report, and it relates to busing. The LPVC is still dealing with some staffing challenges for busing services. It has, it's been a scramble sometimes to secure buses for after-school athletic events. And so, you know, we're trying to work creatively with the LPVC, sometimes moving events around, sometimes combining events. We have had a few events, suburb city events sadly, that have had to be canceled. Few and far between so far, but we'll continue to keep our eyes on that. So that's all I have, and thanks for your time. Happy to answer any questions you might have on any of those.
Just, Marty, just following up on the, at least the annotated agenda that we have, just making sure that some of those are covered. The only differences were MCAS was listed and the school presentation schedule was listed.
School presentation?
Schools presenting to the committee, I imagine, is what that was.
Oh, yeah, yeah, regarding MCAS.
No, there were two separate items.
Okay. So MCAS reports. Um, muted. MCAS reports are in, they'll be mailed to families tomorrow, and expect to sort of furnish the committee with kind of an overview at an upcoming meeting. And then beyond that, going back to that annotated school presentation schedule, oh, thank you. That's the, the school committee had asked that the schools be represented with presentations sort of showcasing some of the great work that's going on. Our schools have signed up for specific dates at upcoming school committee meetings, so we have those locked in. The intention is to have those presentations be reflective of the vision of the graduates, so demonstrating to the committee, to the community, all the variety of ways that students are developing those VOG competencies. So thanks for the cue and the reminder on that. And as was suggested by the committee at an earlier meeting, the presentations will take different shapes. In some cases, it might even be sort of a pre-recorded video-based presentation, which is a good opportunity for kids to pull together, you know, demonstrations of their learning. So that will be a feature of your meetings for the remainder of the year. We've got all six states, I believe, locked in at this point. So thank you.
Thank you, Marty. Comments or questions for Marty on his report? Gianna, go ahead.
Thank you, Superintendent. I love the school presentation, so thank you for that, for that scheduling, to everybody else, that helped, awesome. Superintendent, I'm wondering about the, because as soon as you said it about if there's any groups that want to, you know, maybe host an intern. I mean, I, of course, thought of Brookings, but also I was just wondering, like, do we reach out to Aaron? And is there like a fact sheet of like how many hours and what they need to be doing and like liabilities and all that kind of stuff?
Yeah, so I would encourage anybody that happens to be watching that might be interested in hosting one of our interns that can reach out to me directly, or Aaron Corbett is the Career Education Coordinator at the high school. Aaron Corbett with a C, and she can furnish any would-be placements with all the information that you described. But there is a certain amount of information that the mentors would need in order to support our mentees. It's really a vibrant program. A lot of the work is being guided by the River East School-to-Career Partnership. And so that's an agency that secures state grants for work-based learning and coordinates work-based learning activities out here in Western Mass. But yeah, anybody who's interested can certainly reach out to me and I'll point them towards Aaron Corbett, our career coordinator.
Other questions or comments for Marty? I'll just add, you know, Marty, I think, I just want to speak for myself, but I think for other members as well, is that, you know, I appreciated seeing the focus on how our staff and teachers are doing and their social emotional well-being. I think that's a critical component, I think we all do. And I appreciate knowing that that's what the focus of the upcoming professional development is going to be. It's a critical issue, and, you know, thank you and the rest of the admin team for taking the lead on that. All right, so I think we are moving on, if that is okay with everyone. All right, so next up is the school committee chair report. Just two quick things. One, as I say at all of these meetings, I really want to put another push in for folks to get vaccinated. And I want to explain a little more why. The Board of Health and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education currently require us to have masks. If we want to have flexibility with our mask policy, we need to have as many people as possible vaccinated. If we don't reach a threshold of 80% of people vaccinated in a building, we're not going to have the ability to even consider whether we relax the mask policy. So that means we need we relax the mask policy. So that means we need to have our staff, our teachers, and our kids vaccinated. And and we're, again, trying to make sure we know what those numbers are. And, you know, I think in the high school, we're close, but we need to have as many people as possible vaccinated, so we have as much flexibility as possible when we go to decide what our options are. So please, please get vaccinated. The other one, and and this will come up later in the meeting, but I want to just mention it now. I think it's a a wonderful thing to see that the goals of the school committee and the goals of the select board around diversity, equity, and inclusion are coming together in a really synergistic way. You're gonna see this later on in the meeting when we talk about what the school committee goals are, when we talk about the task force that the select board is putting together, the task force that the school committee is putting together, and and the work that we've done in the past in the town on diversity, equity, and inclusion issues. And I just think it's a very, it it's a very important and a very challenging topic, and I'm excited that everybody is moving in the right direction on this. So stay tuned. Later on in the meeting, we'll talk more about it. That's all that I have. Jamie, please.
Yep, I I couldn't agree with you more with regards to the vaccines and whatnot with regards to schools, Kevin. But can we provide, Marty, do you have the updated numbers where we are by age group, just to make sure everybody is seeing this? Because I I have not seen it from the town, and I don't know whether we saw it last week or not. I think it would be very helpful just to see where we are.
So in your in your packet was a listing of the vaccination levels of town twelve to fifteen-year-olds, sixteen to nineteen-year-olds, and then some other age groups. So twelve to fifteen, the DPH report has us at eighty percent, sixteen for twelve to fifteen-year-old. And then at the sixteen to nineteen-year-old band, it's at eighty-two percent. Now, these are the numbers from mass DPH from the immunization database. And recall that one of the things that we have to tease out is the fact that the folks that are in these numbers might not all be Long Meadow Public School students. In other words, there are students that have graduated who are in the sixteen to nineteen-year-old band. And then there are students in both bands that perhaps are in a private school placement and and not in Long Meadow Public Schools. The other thing that we're trying to understand is there are people that have been vaccinated whose whose information perhaps has not been reported into that mass immunization database. So the state has given us a few different pathways to determine how to potentially reach that eighty percent threshold, which would potentially allow a community to allow a school building that's at that level to remove, make masking optional. Now, that obviously would only come into play if the Board of Health were to rescind its townwide mask mandate. So that, right now, that supersedes the the pathway that that Desi has created to allow for a mask optional approach. But so we're, short answer, we are, at least according to the the immunization database, we're we're right around that. We're hovering at that eighty percent threshold, but we would have to tease that out to find out what the what the specific vaccination levels are of our students.
Got it. And I I completely hear you. I mean, no data is ever that clean. I'm I'm assuming that doesn't include people that are already have had COVID. It seems like every day we're getting notices that people have COVID. So that doesn't include those folks either, if they, only the folks that have been vaccinated, not the ones that have had COVID. So the data is kind of dirty, I guess. I I agree. So.
Yeah, not sure if it answers your question, but we have seen that the percentage of cases in town among vaccinated individuals is fairly high. Let me rephrase that. The percentage of cases that are breakthrough cases is fairly high. But again, the the overall number of cases we reported earlier was that were only eleven active cases at the date that I had written the report for you that's in your packet. So a small number of cases, but a large percentage of that small number are breakthrough cases.
Yeah, that's not what I was referring to, Marty. So and I know you're not the physician, but I'm saying those who haven't been vaccinated that have already had COVID aren't in those numbers either. So you know, the number, I I get it. The the numbers aren't very clean on both sides of the equation. But there are a number of folks in town that have have had COVID, aren't in those numbers that have not been vaccinated as well. So, no, but are are we are we getting that on a daily basis or on a weekly basis and putting that out, or is that something we only get when we request it?
It comes to me, I believe, on a weekly basis. The the number of active cases and then the percentage of individuals at various age groups who are vaccinated, that that report comes to me from the town on a weekly basis.
And and just one more quick thing, and then I'll get to you, Bronwyn. If folks have had COVID, please get vaccinated. Because again, our flexibility is about how many people have been vaccinated, not if you've had COVID. So you need to get vaccinated. Bronwyn, to you.
Oh, thanks, Kevin. I don't, Marty, I don't think you can share publicly, but I was just wondering in terms of the faculty and staff, if we do get close to a number that the Board of Health and or state is comfortable with. How will we know if if we're there? We'll know we're there with the students if they've submitted their stuff. Will we know if we're there? We haven't seen anything on the staff? Are you? I know you're collecting that. I just didn't know.
Yeah.
Percentage-wise, how, like, have you gotten a good turnout on that?
I don't have that information at my fingertips, Bronwyn. I I can tell you that the state would allow a district to let employees self-attest to vaccination status. So if eighty percent of staff self-attested that they were vaccinated, that would be, that's one pathway that the state would allow us to calculate that threshold. Now, whether or not this board or the Board of Health would permit that as a way to kind of gather information on whether or not we hit that eighty percent threshold. I I think I'd want some direction on that at some point, but I could not tell you right now the percentage of staff that are vaccinated.
I mean, do you have any idea? Like, is it?
Uh, you know, right now, we're we're collecting, we collect vaccination records from folks voluntarily and individually. And so the incentive is for individuals who are vaccinated to furnish us with that information because it would potentially keep them from having to test and quarantine. But I I couldn't even tell you, Bronwyn, what percentage of our staff has provided that information to us voluntarily.
Are we able to get that at some point or no?
Um, I gotta, you know, I'm looking over to Mr. Maz, who works pretty frequently with our HR department. We we certainly could.
I mean, not names or anything, or schools, just like an overall.
I I definitely could give you an overall picture of the percentage of individuals that have voluntarily furnished us with evidence of vaccination. So that if if that would be helpful. Beyond that, if we were to sort of require evidence of vaccination or survey folks to get, that would be sort of be the next step. But the best I could do for you right now is to get for you the information on the percentage of individuals that have voluntarily furnished us with evidence of vaccination.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Gianna, go ahead.
Thank you, Kevin. I guess I'll speak for myself, but um I I just want to be careful that this, that we're not we're not sending a message that vaccines hitting that number automatically equal no masks. I like the word used, Kevin, flexibility. I think Superintendent also said, you know, will will help us look at our options, but we've always looked at a number of different data points and scenarios and situations. So I just want to be, I again, speaking for myself, I I don't want to be sending out a message that if we hit that magic number of vaccines, that that automatically means no masks.
Yeah, thank you, Gianna. It's very important to to make that clarification. So thank you for doing that. All right, I think we are. Oh, Jamie, go ahead.
Yeah, I completely agree, Gianna. But the one thing, just not to forget, putting everybody back of everybody's mind, is it's not just masks, it's also what we're doing in lunch as well. It might be, hey, lunch might be appropriate. We're gonna keep the masks on. We're gonna let kids have lunch like normal, you know, so it's not just one or the other from my my vantage point. I think it's a combination of things that I think we should be considering.
Thank you, Jamie. Yep, very good point as well. All right, continuing on the agenda, next up is the student rep reports. Dagan, do we have another report or was the first thing you were reporting?
I have no report for you guys, as we I talked way too much already. But I I know they're not currently here anymore, but just a shout out to Katie, Maddie, Charles, they did a fantastic job. And I, as a public record, I look forward to working with them on our current projects and our future projects.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dagan. All right, our next report is LPVEC, and I will throw it over to Mary.
Um, no report, but our next meeting is on October twentieth.
Excellent. Thank you. Energy and Sustainability, my my quick update from that group is that we, the town just submitted a green community grant request. And in that request was to finish converting all of the lights in the high school so that we could get the most energy-efficient lights in the high school. So I think, Tom, if I'm right, that was a three-part project. We did two parts already, and now this would enable us to do the third. Okay, so hopefully that grant comes through, and then we can finish up that project. So that's the latest from Energy and Sustainability as it relates to schools. Next up is SEAL, and I will pass it to Gianna.
Thank you, Kevin. I definitely wanted to reiterate my appreciation for allowing SEAL Special Education Alliance of Long Meadow to be part of these reports, especially as you pointed out, Kevin. You know, when we're focusing on, or one of our focus points is is diversity, equity, and inclusion. And I just think it's important for for those students and and those families and and anybody affiliated with that organization. I do want to let everybody know the first meeting of SEAL is tomorrow night, Wednesday night, October thirteenth at seven PM. It is via Zoom, so it's virtual. And you can get more information by going to sealma.org. And you can reach out to the the leaders of SEAL for more information, but the first meeting is tomorrow night, October thirteenth. There'll be a presentation by Jean Fontaine, who is the what's her title, Marty?
People Services Director.
People Services Director. Yeah, great. So I hope everybody can tune in for that. Thank you.
Thanks, Gianna. All right, we will continue on to subcommittee reports. And it looks like we do not have reports from finance, policy, or evaluations, but that curriculum submet prior to this meeting. So I'm curious if we have a report from our curriculum group.
We do.
Thank you.
So curriculum met this evening before our current meeting, and we received an update on two things. The first, an update on the piloting of two new K through five math curriculum programs, Bridges and Illustrative Math. And we will hear more about how that pilot program is going and getting more information as the year continues. And the second was a review of the High School Program of Studies, looking specifically at offerings across levels with an eye towards equity, inclusion, and an individualized pathway to success for each student.
Thank you, Nicole. Any questions or comments for Nicole? And Nicole, sorry, one thing, can you just remind us who are the other members of that subcommittee?
There we go. Sorry. Um, yes, myself.
Thank you very much. I think Bronwyn has a question.
No, it's just that that thing happened again while Nicole was still talking. For us, she wasn't done, but for you, she must have been done because you were talking as well.
So I think I think I know what's going on because she borrowed Mary's headphones, and it's what Mary had last time, right?
No, I actually think that the computer is a delay because I think with the last meeting, it was your microphone, but I think this one might be the computer because it was working before. But maybe.
So I didn't really hear that.
Is there any part you didn't hear? Those of you at home.
The last part I heard.
We heard two updates. First, um go ahead. Okay, so um, the first was an update on two new math curriculum programs for K through five, Bridges and Illustrative Math that are both being piloted in schools right now. And the process that was gone through to choose those two and what that pilot process looks like. And we'll be hearing more about that as the year continues. The second thing that we heard about was a review of the program of studies at the high school, particularly looking at offerings across different levels with an eye towards ensuring that we're providing an equitable and inclusive experience for all of our students that sets them up for choosing their own individualized path across different levels and across different departments. And we're gonna be hearing more about that as well, after some research into some of the data on those current offerings at an upcoming meeting.
All right, so I think that we heard all of that. All right, Bronwyn, was that good?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Any comments or questions? Jamie, go ahead.
Yep, I just, no, no comments on the what what was reviewed, but I just want to make sure that we have, you know, at least on the agenda of that group, the middle school ELA, and the review of it and the consistency between Glenbrook and Williams and consistency from sixth grade to seventh grade to eighth grade. I I just want to make sure we don't lose, you know, we keep our eye on that ball. I don't think it's very consistent, but I don't know. So I just want to make sure that committee has that on their agenda.
So thank you for bringing that up, Jamie. So your point is essentially, let's make sure that the curriculum subcommittee is looking into that as an ongoing agenda item. Is that is that a fair way to put it?
Please, yes.
Members of the curriculum subcommittee, are you amenable to that?
Down the notes. I will happily add that to an upcoming agenda as well.
Excellent. We it looks like we have a comment from Suzy. Go ahead, Suzy.
Yes, thank you. We did, you might recall, at the end of last year, we did have a discussion about that, and Sue Bertrand gave us a presentation on the process that the ELA teachers were going to go through this year to to work on curriculum alignment. But yes, it should be a continued discussion so we can understand the progress. Because there was also action, there were also action items related to, you know, what to do right now while the curriculum is being written. So it would be good to add that to our next meeting.
Bronwyn, go ahead.
Uh, just a follow-up to the to what Suzy said. So that curriculum is not written yet for the ELA. If not, when is that taking place?
Yeah, it's it's, they're, they've already started to write their curriculum. So their alignment is the main reason why they are undertaking it. But they, so.
So is the idea for it to go into effect at the beginning of next next school year?
No, hopefully sooner than that, Bronwyn. They they're actually pretty far along in the process. No, hopefully sooner than that, Bronwyn. They they're actually pretty far along in the process. There was a group that met over the summer quite a few times, so, um, I think they've already stepped up some of their writing, um, experiences for students and kind of aligned them, uh, to each other and to best appropriate. So I can bring you back, uh, some more information on that next time if you'd like.
Yeah, right, and I think that's definitely the appropriate way to do this is to bring that back to the curriculum subcommittee and then it could come back to the full committee. So thank you to everybody for, um, reminding us of that. Um, other comments or questions for the curriculum subcommittee? All right. We will move ahead to ongoing business. And our ongoing business is the subcommittee or the school committee goals. Um, and just as a reminder, we worked on this last meeting. Um, and thanks to Diane and Suzie, we have now, uh, a revised draft, um, which we hopefully will be able to agree on and vote on. So, um, I wanna direct everybody to what we have as the revised goals and see if there is any discussion before we get to a possible motion. So, uh, comments, questions on the revised goals? And, um, Marty, I wonder if it would make sense to to put those goals up so that folks who are watching could see them, and that might make it a little easier for us to discuss them. So while Marty is getting that up, are there comments or questions that folks want to share? Gianna, go ahead.
Thank you, Kevin. I, um, yeah, and thank you to Diane Superintendent, everybody else, and for the discussion of the committee last time we met. Um, I just have a couple of, like, little typos and stuff, Kevin, so I don't know. What's Diane, what's the, or Kevin, what's the best way to end, to get those changed?
Um, yeah, Gianna, I I thank you for bringing that up. I I think some of us, uh, saw those. So, uh, I think it probably makes sense if if you just wanna roll through them, because I think if we're gonna vote on it, we need to know what we're voting on. So, uh, I think that would be my recommendation. Um, Diane, does that seem reasonable to you as well? Yeah, okay, so I I think you should just roll through it, Gianna, if you don't mind.
All right, thanks, Kevin. So that the the second sentence, I think just needs a capital T, through resource allocation. It's the beginning of that second sentence.
Feel free to keep going, Gianna, if you have.
Okay, I wasn't sure she was doing this real time or not.
I am. I've got a Word document and I'm doing it in real time.
Oh, okay, and we're not looking at a shared document, so, okay. All right, so then, um, underneath the centered curriculum, that that sentence, the school committee will work through the curriculum subcommittee. I think we just need to be consistent and capitalize curriculum subcommittee. All right, bullet number, I mean, yeah, um, bullet number two under that section, um, multi-tiered systems of support period, we don't need that period. The sentence under bullet number four in that section, this is just me, others might disagree, but that's a long list of things, so after equity reports, I think there needs to be a comma.
Tell me where you are.
Sorry, um, under bullet number four, that sentence, this work will be informed by multiple data points, including blah, blah, blah. I think after equity reports, there needs to be a comma.
Thank you.
Under policy goals, that first sentence, the school committee will work through the policy subcommittee to inventory, analyze, and I think it's supposed to be analyze and revise existing policies, semicolon, and potentially draft new district policy.
Okay.
Um, on the, on the next page or on the backside, under fiscal.
Yep.
Um, the, so under that bullet number two, I think that paragraph, the school committee will work through the finance. I think you want that, um, moved out to the left to match. I'm not, I'm not explaining that very well.
I understand.
Got it. Thank you, Diane. Um, in that same sentence, capitalized finance.
Yep.
And then in that same sentence, um, it says to advocate for funding for the district funding. So I don't know if it's just supposed to be to advocate for the district funding. Like a that makes sense?
Yep.
And then, um, the sentence after that, that starts with maintaining, I think that's supposed to be dropped down into the left, Diane.
Okay.
And that was all I had.
Thank you, Gianna. We appreciate you, um, and your attention to detail because it's important. Um, all right, so we have the the goals up. Uh, are there comments or questions? And again, Marty will be able to scroll through to whatever section people would like to talk about. Uh, if we don't have comments or questions, there is a possible motion.
Kevin, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just realized in looking this up at this on the screen. Um, Diane, some of the sentences have periods at the end and some don't. So that's just a matter of either we, either they all have periods or they all don't.
Which would you rather?
No periods, Nicole.
I think since it's a successive list, yeah. Either way.
Who's got their elements of style?
Maybe the, maybe the bulleted numbers.
That'd probably be a semicolon after.
You unmute, Nicole.
I'm wondering if it should just be a semicolon after, which one since it's technically continuing on.
I apologize, friends. I'm not trying to be, I'm just either, I, you know, I don't have an affection either way. I just wanted to be consistent.
Kevin, can I make a suggestion?
Please, yeah, Suzie, go ahead.
Yes, um, go ahead, and I I would recommend if, you know, for stylistic reasons, um, including the semicolons and a period at the end at the last one.
Thank you, Suzie.
Under curriculum, the first three would have semicolons and number four would have a period.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Uh, we have a potential motion.
I move that the school committee approved the school committee goals from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two as amended and dated October. I was keeping the date, October fifth, twenty twenty-one. Do we need today's?
Today's name.
Okay, um, I move the school committee approved the school committee goals twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two as amended and dated October twelfth, twenty twenty-one.
Do we have a second?
Say it again.
Is there any further discussion? Uh, Marty, do you mind stopping the screen share? Thank you. Excellent timing. Um, let's move to a vote. All right, Nicole?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me. Uh, thank you to everyone for your hard work on on the goals. And as a reminder, we will revisit them in January and again in June, um, so. Excellent. Thank you for all the great work on on making that happen. All right, um, next up is district and community diversity, equity and inclusion task forces. Um, so select board is requesting that the school committee be represented on a select board task force. And as we just voted in our goals, we are also talking about establishing a district-based task force. So, uh, I'm hoping, Marty, if you're okay speaking to that a little bit, and I'm I'm also happy to speak a little bit to that.
So there's sort of a few elements here. Uh, one is the findings of the select board's, uh, anti-racism, uh, racial justice task force. So in the spring of twenty twenty-one, that select board-appointed task force culminated its work and as part of that, uh, had a series of recommendations, uh, one of which was to, uh, sort of establish an ongoing, um, task force to support the adoption of those anti-racism goals with a, also a a notation in there that, uh, they develop a dedicated liaison to coordinate efforts with the school committee. So there was clearly some, uh, hope from that report from the spring of twenty-one that the, uh, select board and the school committee would, uh, work together on the implementation of those, uh, of the findings of that task force. So, um, as Kevin mentioned earlier, uh, there's some good synergy happening on this issue in the sense that we had completed our, uh, equity audit. And I think what I've heard loud and clear from this committee is that you're interested in having sort of a standing, uh, task force, for lack of a better phrase, right now, to ensure that we're following up on the goals of that equity audit. So sort of, um, we wanna capture the energy of those two groups without, um, you know, sort of bumping into each other, uh, but doing it in a way that, you know, the the work of one group supports the work of the other. So, uh, the the select board has put a request out to this committee for the school committee to be represented on on their task force. And yet I know that as a committee, you've you've kind of directed us to ensure that we have our own sort of standing committee, uh, maybe representative of all stakeholders to follow up on the the findings of the equity audit. So I think it's a matter of of thinking about what's the best fit and how we can continue to work together with the town to make sure that, you know, the the synergistic ball keeps rolling here. So I hope that frames it okay?
Yeah, I I think so, and I guess the only other thing I would, um, would ask Marty is is maybe now is a good time for you to to at least give us your thoughts on on planning for the task force for the the L P S, um, if that's appropriate to do right now. I think that might help folks think about, you know, what makes the most sense, and then we can talk about who might be interested in doing it. So is that okay if we tackle that now?
Yeah, for sure. So it's it's your next agenda item, but as a plank of our district improvement plan, uh, we had proposed the idea of creation of an ongoing system for student, family and staff feedback and engagement focused on inclusion and equity. And additionally, as a another item in that district improvement plan, engagement of L P S with community boards, organizations or events focused on creating a more inclusive and welcoming, uh, community. So that as an example, I think about our participation in the Long Meadow Pride Festival, and, uh, we had a number of educators who, uh, represented the the great work that's happening here in Long Meadow Public Schools, and it was a way for us to connect with, uh, folks in the community who are working hard on on that issue. And then, um, finally, we had noted the proposed the establishment of a standing D E I task force focused on implementing and monitoring progress with equity goals. So those are three things from our district improvement plan that kind of feed into this discussion right now. So the thought was that, you know, uh, maybe getting some feedback tonight, but perhaps coming back to the committee at your next meeting or a future meeting and saying, this is what we were imagining as a sort of, uh, uh, a committee that's reflective of all L P S stakeholders that will continue to kind of keep us, keep our eyes on the findings of that equity audit and and make sure that we're we're staying true to the goals of that study. So, so those are, you know, all this is sort of coming together, um, coincidentally in a, in some very good ways, some very positive ways. And so, um, my hope is that I I would come back to this committee at a future meeting and say, you know, this is, this is the membership that we're looking at, and these are some of the tasks that that group would focus on, um, to, again, ensure that we're we're following up in that equity audit. We we don't want that to be a document that that sits as a as a binder on a shelf somewhere. We want it to be something that feeds into the district improvement plan and feeds into our school improvement planning efforts.
Yeah, thank you, Marty, and and I'll just say one more thing and then open it up for comment, which is, um, I'm I'm imagining that the the district task force that Marty's talking about and and that we'll hear more about hopefully in two weeks' time would likely have representation of two members from the school committee on it. Is that fair to say, Marty? Um, and then, uh, I think we we would like to have one person as a school committee representative on the select board task force, right? So I think we're thinking about three people, one with the select board, two with our own task force, right? So just to give people an idea of what we're talking about. So I'm happy to open it up to questions and comments right now. Gianna, go ahead.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Superintendent, um, and everybody with L P S for, you know, for making that a part of 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 the goals. Um, I agree, I think there definitely needs to be a school committee representative on the select board group or task force, whatever it's called, um. And that, yes, we have our own, um, but I definitely want us to be careful, and it sounds like Superintendent, you're already saying this anyway, and I know how this group and how, you know, some of the leaders think, um. I don't want to see two groups doing the same stuff. And even though we have representatives and liaison, you know, um, I'd love to see very strategic, um, kind of methodical implementation of of both of those, um, groups or task force.
And 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 I'll just give you my take on that, Gianna, because I think it's a really important point. Um, we have it down under new business, but I I'm just gonna talk about it now because it makes sense, which is the Select Board Racial Justice Task Force report. Um, and if if folks took a look at that and 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 if you didn't, great. If you did, great. If you didn't, take a look at it at some point. Uh, there are goals from that task force that specifically relate to the schools. And when I talked to to Mark Strange, the chair of the select board, he said, look, we we don't have any jurisdiction over the schools. We can't do that. That's what we want the schools to do. And so when we talked, it made sense for those school-related goals from that previous task force to go to our group. And then the select board goals to go to the town goals, to go to the select board. And I think the idea of having, uh, somebody from this group on the select board group was just to inform them of how things are going with the work we're doing, and I also think it'd be great for us to know what's happening with them. Because some of the goals actually do overlap where it's like, hey, we need to do a better job of, uh, you know, hiring folks in town, the whole town, the schools, the town, whatever. Uh, maybe we wanna have a a diversity, equity and inclusion officer that would work for the town and the school. So I I think your point is well taken, and I think that was something that that Mark and I talked about. And and I think we can absolutely make sure we're not doing the same thing and not talking to each other. And I think having some representation from this committee with them will really make sure that's that's happening.
Thank you, Kevin, and you just made me think too, I think it'll also go a long way in terms of, you know, the community members that we're gonna be partnering with. You know, we don't want two groups reaching out to the same speaker, to the same expert on a certain thing, or to the same, you know, um, you know, whatever the organization or the person may be offering, uh, so thank you for that.
Other comments or questions on this? And and one thing that that I was thinking about, and again, I'm I'm happy for committee members to, um, to chime in on this, uh, for right now, I would be very happy to volunteer to be the liaison to the select board um, on this topic and and tell Mark that I'm happy to to fill that role. Um, if if that's okay with folks on this committee, I don't have to do that, but I'm happy to if it's okay with the rest of you. Okay, I'm seeing some thumbs up. Okay, I'm seeing some thumbs up. I don't think we need a motion on this. Um, so I will tell Mark that I'm happy to do that. And and then Marty, if if I heard you correctly, in in two weeks' time, you will have maybe a plan for us um, to establish the the task force that we're working on. Is that is that fair? Okay, great. Excellent. Um, okay, I think we're ready to move on. Right, so now we are to new business, uh, district improvement plan, and so I will pass it back to Marty.
Thank you so much. Um, we did take a vote on the school goals and the school committee goals, correct? All right, we're good. I just wanted to make sure that we had wrapped that up. Uh, so So for your consideration tonight is uh a proposed district improvement plan for uh that would carry us through this year and the next two school years. And uh, the, we've had several opportunities to sort of talk about this as it has taken shape uh over the last several months. You know, more recently, well, to to sort of jump into it, um, this slide here sort of captures many of the inputs that have gone into the development of this plan, beginning with the the equity audit. I hope you'll see that the school committee goals that have taken shape over the last few meetings are positively reflected in this district improvement plan. Uh, certainly, there is some sort of carryover business from our previous district improvement plan uh, that is reflected in this plan. The staff and community survey uh, that we issued back in the spring, I think is is comprehensively reflected in this plan, and I want to show you some evidence of that. Uh, we had a a really robust administrative retreat over the summer. Uh, a lot of our collective combined thinking is reflected uh in this plan from that retreat. We had a really productive opportunity to do a a retreat, a mini retreat with the school committee. And our administrators sat down with the school committee and and we had some great back and forth conversation around, you know, what uh each sort of everybody thought was important for the success, continued success of this district. School improvement plans are currently under development. Those are uh documents that are developed by our school councils. So we've kind of been back and forth with our principals to understand what they're hearing from their school councils. And then we've talked here uh at to the school committee and the community about our interest in the MTSS framework, specifically the the multi-tiered systems of support, which we think is a a a framework that will can really positively guide our work in the in the days ahead. So you have the 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 full plan uh in your packet and happy to answer any questions you might have on any of the components of the plan. If I could, I wanted to zero in on one of the really significant inputs into the development of this plan, and that is the staff and community survey that we did back in the spring. Uh, as I mentioned, we had a really good response um on that and and at a busy time at the end of the school year and throughout the summer. And we asked several questions that were based on the DESI standards for district improvement and also based on a an open source uh survey developed by Panorama Education. So we we think it was a a research-based survey. And one of the first questions we asked, we we gave everyone an open opportunity to tell us what was the single most positive aspect of this district relating to our efforts to support student learning and achievement. And uh, I I took it upon myself to do uh a wordle here to sort of reflect what was the most commonly noted response. And and this this captures what we heard over and over and over. And and so clearly, the community places great value and has great respect for the work that our classroom teachers do on a on a daily basis. And that that came out loud and clear in this survey, and it comes out loud and clear in this in this wordle. I was also really happy to to see words like care and support and community and those things that are, you know, not necessary, that are are sort of a a central part of our work, uh, but aren't necessarily purely academically focused. So we asked, in the survey, we asked folks to give us some feedback on both our effectiveness in certain areas and what they felt our priorities ought to be. So there were fourteen indicators in the staff and community survey that where folks had an opportunity to tell us what they thought about our effectiveness and whether or not they thought it ought to be a continued priority for us. So the fourteen areas are are reflected on this slide here. We asked uh everyone to give us some feedback uh in those areas, and the school committee had an opportunity to review the results of that staff and community survey at our at our retreat a few weeks back. And we had a really rich conversation on that, and and it was a great starting point for us in terms of developing the this the district improvement plan that is in front of you tonight. So what we heard, um, I'm going to focus on on the priority areas that we heard from the staff and the community. And what we heard was uh, uh, the 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 areas that folks, you know, told us ought to be our priority in the coming year are those that I've singled out on this slide. Promoting inclusive equity and access, uh, inclusiveness, equity and access for all learners. Hiring, developing, retaining the best staffs, supporting, continue to support the social, emotional wellbeing of students. Uh, what what popped in this survey that maybe we haven't seen as much in in more recent years is that notion of providing instruction that is engaging and relevant, you know, making sure that kids feel connected to their learning. Uh, we feel that, you know, obviously, when when students feel feel connected, when they feel engaged, they're going to be more self-motivated, they're going to own their learning in really important intrinsic ways. But that the item that that was sort of frankly, most frequently reported back to us was the last bullet on this slide. And that is the notion of ensuring that we are differentiating instruction to inclusively account for the differences uh, that had that in students' learning. That was the sort of the the most frequently cited priority area that we heard back from the staff and the community on. And so I hope you see that our district improvement plan is sort of, I'd say, laser focused on that last bullet. And when we sort of sat down to digest uh all of these inputs, um, and we've been doing it over the course of many months, frankly, but as we sat down to digest these many inputs, we came up with uh three overarching goals. And I shared these with the committee uh at recent meetings, but uh, these overarching goals are to strengthen our shared vision and understanding and implementation of inclusive and equitable practice by uh aligning district culture and practice with MTSS, by being highly focused on the principles of UDL. So um, this is, we'll talk a little bit about what that means and what that means for our students and our staff. And then finally, that last bullet, that broader renewed and widely shared vision of student success. So those are the three overarching goals that are reflected in this district improvement plan. And it's hard to capture in a in a slide deck, sort of the density of the plan, but maybe some high level highlights. I know the committee has seen this and is familiar with most of these uh items in here. But for folks watching at home, I thought it might be helpful to share at a high level some of the some of the strategies that are a focus of this district improvement plan. Uh, beginning with Universal PD, sorry, for the sort of acronym there, Universal Professional Development, on the tenants of multi-tiered systems of support. And that's a a framework that is captured in the diagram on the right of this slide. But again, it ensures that we are being focused on tiered systems of support, that we have strong tier one universal instruction and support uh for all students and that as students' needs change, that we are prepared to provide them with uh, more intense supports. And again, that's whether that's they're in need of additional challenge or perhaps they're in need of additional support. Uh, and MTSS self-assessment, our administrative team actually has already kind of undergone that. We we went through a a comprehensive uh self-assessment to figure out what our needs were in terms of needing that MTSS framework. Uh, and then uh, ensuring that we are implementing the findings of that equity audit. Uh, equitable access is is really a key tenant of that MTSS framework. Ensuring that students feel that they are uh welcome members of a classroom, of a school, and that they have uh, that they have access to the learning in ways that are appropriate. What does that mean? That means that we are continuing to stay engaged with the community on this issue. It means that we we established that task force that we talked about a a moment ago, that we expand uh district level leadership capacity, and that's something that that we want to continue to think about and bring some thoughts back to the committee at at a future date. That we focus on hiring, that we we are inclusive in our hiring practices, and that we are working hard to attract and retain talented teachers and and particularly teachers of color. We've heard that uh, you know, resoundingly from students, from the staff, from the community, that it's important to diversify our workforce. And then the continued curation of the curriculum uh to ensure that the materials that that students have access to are reflective of the diversity of this great world. And then finally, review and revision and alignment of tiered supports. We want to make sure that the the supports and the interventions that students have in one building are comparable to the supports and uh interventions that they have in a in another school. Second goal relates to this this uh focus on on UDL, which is ensuring that students are uh are have access to classrooms where they are engaged in many different ways, that we are representing information to them in many different formats, and that we give them multiple opportunities to demonstrate their learning. So that that diagram is is something that we um want to be have become familiar to our staff. Beginning with uh the November thirteenth professional day, we will start to engage our educators on the tenants of UDL. Much of this work is, you know, frankly, already happening across the district. There there's incredible pockets of excellence on this, and we want to uh build on that foundation that that's already in place. And then ensure that we're tying our um, our interest in UDL into the supports that we provide teachers, the the coaching that is available to them, the collaboration time that we need to make uh available to them. And then it's also tied into educator goals and and the evaluation that that we do of those goals. So that's going to be, you know, a a a critical component. This really gets to this issue of how do we continue to to differentiate instruction uh so that all students feel challenged, they feel that the learning is relevant to them and that they have multiple ways to to demonstrate their learning to us. Then finally, strengthening this uh this vision of student success. We have talked quite a bit about uh thinking differently about student success, and a lot of that has revolved around the competencies and the vision of the graduate, that the importance of providing students with opportunities for them to work independently, to be problem solvers, to think critically, to collaborate. All those skills that are are really critical to success in the world that they're heading into. Uh, what does that mean? Well, you see, some of the some of the initiatives that are tied to this idea, uh, expanding standards-based teaching and learning, I think we've made great progress on that. I think there's there's still room for growth for us. Aligning learner behaviors at on on report cards, let's say, with the vision of the graduates. So if we're reporting to families on on how students are doing with their sort of those non-academic competencies, we want those non-academic competencies to be tied into the VOG. We don't want the VOG to be just a sort of focus of of LHS. We want it to be a a focus of all of our schools. Um, and and having a way to to measure and report out on student success with the VOG, we think is critical. That actually came to us from the NAFC uh report. That's another input into this district improvement plan, the 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 NAFC self-study that the high school uh took upon. And then finally, the 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 challenge success survey, this committee had um authorized and recommended that we um issue that survey. And it's a a comprehensive survey of the experience of students uh in Long Meadow Public Schools, and we want that to guide our our work going forward. We talked about student-led conferences. We talked about, you know, having a, you know, a broader array of learning opportunities for students and expanding career education. Career education has some, you know, the the spectrum of activities. Some of those activities are applicable to our middle school students even. So there's a lot of work here. Uh, we're we're ready to sort of roll up our sleeves. Again, my my hope is uh that you see that it is reflective of a variety of inputs. I hope you see that it's consistent with the the goals that this committee has developed over the last few years, including this year. Uh, and we hope that, you know, these district goals will drive school goals and the goals of individual educators. So we're excited to bring this to you as as a proposed district improvement plan and happy to answer questions you might have or or offer any clarifications that are needed. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Marty. Just one quick point that I I think you mentioned, but I wanted you to just highlight it. You you said these are our goals for the next three years. And can you just remind us, like, this is a state requirement, right? So can you just maybe just expand on that briefly?
It is a state requirement to to have a a district improvement plan in place. Uh, and a three-year plan is is typically the recommendation. And then to have that drive um individual school goals and educator goals. So it's it's certainly a requirement that we have a district improvement plan in place from DESI, and a three-year plan is is the is the typical approach.
Thank you. Uh, comments or questions on the district improvement plan? Gianna?
Thank you, Kevin, and thank you, Superintendent, and your team and everybody that's not here that, you know, had a hand in in creating these these goals. I just wanted to um, and I appreciate everything, again, that that y'all, that that the effort and energy that it takes to do this. But as a school counselor in a um significantly diverse setting from racially, culturally, domestically, you know, learning abilities, um, special education needs, um, and as a school counselor who deals with social, emotional and behavioral goals for students, um, I just really wanted to 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 truly express my appreciation for the focus on social, emotional, behavioral differentiated um instruction. And 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 again, just you're looking at the holistic child, and I think that's just um commendable, and I just wanted to say thank you. I also work with the MTSS system, and so I know, you know, the the value that that's going to come from that. So thank you.
Thank you, Gianna. Other comments or questions?
Thank you. Um, yeah, I I appreciate the alignment with the um school committee goals in particular. And I think um a lot of that came from that uh retreat, being engaged with the uh admin team on. But I I think there's been a lot of synergy already, um, even before that in where we were headed. Um, I I I guess my question um is, and I understand this is a three-year plan. Um, so much of this work requires time and innovation and a willingness to really rethink current practices, current policies, current ways of doing things. Um, so how will you guarantee that, you know, in three years, when we look back, what are we, what are we measuring? What are, how will we know that we've succeeded? What is the, what is the end result? What is the the end state look like? Um, when we can kind of say, yes, we 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 have turned this ship. It's hard to change schools. It's hard to change districts. It's very difficult to upend institutions that have, you know, what seem like, you know, pretty rigid, you know, ways of doing things, right? And it's not just Long Meadow, it's everywhere. So um, what do we, what do we expect to see um from our students, from our learners, from our, from So what do we what do we expect to see from our students, from our learners, from our from the growth? What do we expect to see at the end of three years?
I think I think it's an excellent question. I think the a lot of this will come down to when we're making big decisions about schedules or programmatic offerings or staffing or or building schedules for kids, you know, are we are we thinking about that through the lens of this district improvement plan? Are we thinking about how does how do these offerings, or how does this budget, or how does this, how does this schedule? How is it driving the provide the renewed vision of student success? How is it supporting that MTSS framework? I think the the MTSS framework and the VOG give us a sort of a litmus test against which to measure everything that we do. And, you know, my hope would be that every big conversation that we have with this committee is informed by this plan, but it's informed by that MTSS framework, and it's informed by us thinking differently about student success and and challenging old assumptions and 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 thinking differently about the opportunities that we give kids to learn. And that's at, I suppose it's at the, you know, the classroom level through the UDL lesson design, but it's also at the at the building level in terms of the the schedules that we create, you know. So I I think those are, you know, my hope is that we can look back in three years and say the the curriculums that we adopted, the programmatic changes that we made, the schedules that we built, the budgets that we built were driven by these goals. I don't know that you ever, you know, get to the finish line on some of this work. I I have a a fun way of saying to our administrators, sometimes we could be an administrator for a hundred years, and we're still going to be trying, you know, refining and challenging the the way that we're designing lessons for students, you know. So it though it's a three-year plan, and I think there's some clear actionable steps, some of this, I suspect we'll we'll want to sustain, you know, well beyond three years. And moving towards a sort of that that UDL approach at the classroom level, I think it causes it challenges our assumptions at every level, at the classroom level, the the school level and the district level. So, you know, my hope is that we can look back and say that we we've we've accomplished the the work that is in this plan. What I I think what I've heard from this committee is, you know, having defined metrics is is a challenge sometimes, and sometimes it can run counter to the work that we're describing here, but also having a way of measuring VOG success, I think that's something from the NAFC report that we'll want to do to be able to report back to the committee. These are these are, this is how we, how many students are meeting the competencies in that VOG, for example.
Yeah, go ahead, Suzie.
Thank you. Yeah, just a quick follow-up from that. And I I was I'm really excited that you didn't say anything about test scores, to be honest with you, because test scores are just one element of this, right? That test scores should actually take care of themselves if the, you know, instruction is engaging and you're meeting your own established, you know, expectations for what students should be learning and how they should be learning it and and the instructional environment such that they learn it, right? So I appreciated that, and I appreciated you talking about the emphasis on changing those systems and structures, but also the vision of success and and how that will be informed and and sort of, you know, continue to grow with the the learners, you know, in terms of the competencies that they're they're achieving. So thank you for that. I appreciate that.
Thank you for bringing that up, Suzie. Other comments or questions? Well, I guess I would just like to to say, you know, a quick thank you to Marty and his team for putting all this together. We all know how much work it is. So thank you for for all the work you did to to put this together. And and again, I know that there's a lot of work to come to to implement this and and work on the the school improvement plans and and all that. So so thank you for the work you have done and the work that you will continue to do. We have a possible motion.
I'm going to school committee, the school year twenty one, twenty two to school year twenty three, twenty four, district improvement plan is presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Gianna?
Just a simple thing. Thank you, Kevin. Is the way that, see, the there's three twos, twenty, twenty-two, two. I don't know if it makes it like.
It's the year twenty thousand two hundred twenty-two.
Yeah, I was like, I couldn't even say the number. Does it have to be written correctly on here? No, it's okay. Thank you, Tim.
We'll take that as a typo that will be corrected. Any other discussion? All right, we will move to a vote. Nicole?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Mary?
Best.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me. Thank you, everyone. The next item are charter changes. And so this was something that I brought up at our last meeting, and the select board is looking for feedback on recommended changes to the town charter that affect the school committee. And and you have in your packet the language that is proposed for the charter revision. Marty, did you want to comment on this?
Sure. So in your in your packet, as Kevin said, is the the proposed changes to the Long Meadow Town Charter. They had a charter review commission that had been assembled pre-pandemic and had been working on this for a couple of years, I'd say anyways. And there's a number of changes. This isn't the only changes that came out of their work, but they're the ones that are relevant to you. And there's some specific language around the appointment and dismissal of a superintendent. And the question, I think, before us is whether or not this aligns with your policies and my contract. So and and I'm speaking generically because the sort of the the language of my contract is the language that's largely been in place and is is widely used. So I had issued this to our attorney to ask him to weigh in on it to see if really this language belongs in a town charter. His first pass-through was that it it really didn't make sense for this to be in a charter. School committees operate independently. You have your own policies on the hiring of superintendents. And, you know, he felt that it it really was in potentially in conflict with your with your policies and with the contract that you have with me currently. So you know, frankly, frankly, this is, these charter changes are more protective of of a superintendent than than the committee would typically want to have, frankly. So you know, selfishly, this this the the town charter would offer me greater protection, but I don't think it makes sense to have the town charter supersede your own policy and the language that you have with a superintendent, again, speaking generically. So the the, I think the select board was looking for you to weigh in on this. As it stands right now, the the appointment language definitely doesn't match your poli- your policy is actually silent on the number of committee members that's needed to appoint the superintendent, to hire a superintendent. And so by default, your policy is that it's a simple majority of a quorum would appoint a superintendent. The language of this charter would require that five members of the full school committee would approve the appointment of a superintendent. So, you know, I I guess my recommendation would be that you ask the select board to 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 strike this language and allow your own policies and your own contracts with superintendents to sort of guide the appointment and dismissal of a superintendent. Again, speaking generically here, this is this has nothing to do with me presently, but it's just a a a long-term charter review proposal. So I hope that's all.
Thank you, Marty. Just one one quick point, and then I'll get to comments and questions. So just to make sure I'm understanding, you're essentially saying your your recommendation would be for this, what we're looking at for the proposed changes to the charter, that our recommendation to the select board might be under superintendent of schools, just say something along the lines of refer to the policies of the school committee, right? Like, just get rid of that entire paragraph and say the school committee has policies around this and refer to them. Okay, so that I just want to make sure I heard you right. Okay, excellent. Questions or comments? Bronwyn?
Yeah, I I think that makes sense if it's not aligned and if it's a different language. I was just curious as to whether or not they will accept those changes, only because didn't, wasn't there like a charter review committee that like reviewed everything and then submitted their recommendations, and the select board accepted certain recommendations and things like that? So I was just wondering if that's even an option for us to go back and say, I mean, I guess we could say it, and then if it's not an option, they can tell us.
So so Bronwyn, I'm happy to speak to that. Thank you for for bringing that up. I I don't know if the select board has voted on parts of the charter. What I I do know is they have not voted on this part of the charter. So when I spoke to Mark Strange, again, the the chair of the select board, they are going to vote on at least this part of the charter next week, and so he wanted our feedback before that vote. And so he expressed to me that he would welcome any feedback that we had. He didn't say one way or the other whether they would accept our feedback, but he said that our feedback is completely relevant and timely because they have not made a decision on the part of the chart- this part of the charter. And my understanding is they are able to accept or reject pieces of the charter as they see fit. They don't have to accept the entire thing or reject the entire thing. So does that help answer the question, Bronwyn?
Yeah, definitely. And and I do think that if it if it doesn't align with the policies that we have in place, that that just gets confusing if you have to, people start wondering, well, which which part are we supposed to follow and and things like that? So I do think that Marty says makes sense. But I'm not sure if other people think.
Thank you, Bronwyn. Other comments or questions? Suzie, please.
I agree with Bronwyn. I agree with Marty on this.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Nicole, please.
I'm wondering if rather than scratching the whole paragraph of what we might want to recommend is a change to some of the language. So for example, instead of scratching everything, say, the school department shall be under the direct control of the superintendent of schools appointed in adherence to the policies of the school committee. And the rest of that sentence is gone. And then the same, the superintendent may be removed from office by an affirm- by adher- adherence to the policies of the school committee, and then leaving that last section, the superintendent shall manage the school system, et cetera. I'm wondering if they might prefer that so that some of the language that's already in existence remains and just scratches out the parts that we might find in conflict with our own current policies.
Yeah, thank you, Nicole. I I I like that suggestion a lot. Other comments or questions? Gianna?
I I was kind, thanks, Kevin. Thanks, Nicole. I I was kind of thinking I really liked the original, just keep it simple. You know, look at, otherwise, there's got, there's bound to be bits and pieces of what Nicole just described. But also, are we gonna have to like, you know, be looking and making sure, you know, that I, I think the original suggestion of as simple as possible, refer to the language of the school committee or the policy, however you said it, Kevin.
Marty, please.
I think I'd suggest that you don't have to spend time trying to rewrite it for them. I think I'd just suggest that you you take a position on whether or not you think this is in conflict or it's or alternatively consistent with your policy and the contract that you you have with the superintendent. So I I don't I don't know that you need to figure out how to reword it to make it acceptable. I think that's probably their purview, and it's up to them to decide whether or not to simply strike the language or or reword it.
Thank you, Marty. Suzie, go ahead.
Does this require a vote?
Yeah, I I think that, I know, I know we don't have a proposed motion, but I think it would be helpful if I was able to go to the select board with a vote. Do you do you want to make a motion, Suzie?
I'll make a motion. I move that the school committee read, it sounds harsh, but reject the recommendations of the town charter for changes in the language around the appointment and dismissal or termination of a superintendent.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Diane, are you good with the wording of that motion? Thinking Diane saying nothing is yes. Okay. Hold on. Diane, you need to unmute and go ahead.
All right. So right now, if we, if you reject what the change is, it's gonna stay that to hire a superintendent would require at least five of you, because that's what's currently in the charter. And then to remove a superintendent is just a majority of all.
Okay.
So so the charter right now, as the charter stands, talks about hiring a superintendent needing five, a supermajority of the committee. And in removing the superintendent, it you don't need a major, um, supermajority. So you so just want to clear on that.
So we actually have to recommend new language.
Yeah, so Diane, yeah, and Diane, thank you for that clarification. So I think my understanding is right now our policies are in conflict with our current charter. So we not only have a problem with the current charter, we have a problem with the proposed charter as well. Okay. So I think we may need to revise Suzie's motion. And Gianna, do you have?
Oh, let's draw it.
Okay. So do we have to vote on that, or are we okay if Suzie withdraw? All right, Suzie has withdrawn the the motion. Gianna? Do you want me to, all right, Bronwyn, Gianna is yielding to.
No, I, uh, before I was actually just gonna say, or what Diane did. That's how I was understanding it too. So I'm all set.
Excellent. And I I think Suzie is hard at work on a revised motion. Anybody want to make a comment while we wait for Suzie to come up with a revised motion? Gianna, go ahead.
Thanks, Kevin. Sorry about the computer glitch. I, um, yeah, I was thinking that the language was gonna be the school committee recommends that language be be stricken from the I thought that's what we were doing, is recommending to strike the language altogether, not kind of.
Well, I I'll give you my take, which is, I I think I agree with Marty. I don't know if this committee cares about the exact language, other than the charter should be consistent with the policies of the school committee, which right now it is not, and in the proposed changes, it is not.
Yeah, that's what I mean. Just get, just just get it out altogether.
But I'm not, what I just said is not get it out altogether. It's whatever the select board would like has to be consistent with the policies of the school committee. So that could be, it just says, refer to the policy of the school committee, or it could be, as Nicole said, revise this. So there's more words, but it's still consistent with the policy of the school. Like, I don't think we should care how many words are here. They just have to be consistent with our own policies. That's my take.
Yeah, I must not be articulating.
Yeah, I must not be articulating correctly then, because I, I feel like we either have to tell them, because what if they change it to something that we still don't?
I, I'm gonna talk to Mark Strange. And we're gonna make sure whatever they want here is consistent with the policies of the school committee.
So it doesn't leave, doesn't leave us here and then go to them and they vote and, and that's the end of it.
I'm gonna talk to Mark Strange.
Okay.
And I'm hopeful, confident that we'll be able to come up with something that is consistent with our policies.
Perfect. Thank you, Kevin.
Uh, Suzie, are you, are you ready?
I think so. Um, I move that the school committee recommend to the town charter committee that any town charter language regarding the hiring and termination of the superintendent refer to the policies of the school committee outlining same.
And can I just, a quick friendly amendment there? We're recommending to the select board, because I think that
I'm sorry. Yes, okay. Uh, move that the school committee recommend to the select board that that town charter language regarding the hiring and termination of the superintendent of schools should refer to the policies of the school committee regarding the same.
Do we have a second? Any further discussion? All right, let's go to a vote. Nicole?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me. Uh, thank you, everyone. Uh, I will report back to Mark Strange and I will let you know at our next meeting. Marty, go ahead.
I just make a final note, uh, in case the discussion's confusing to anybody that is really policy housekeeping and, and there's no, you know, not relation to any, any current, uh, consideration. It, it's simply a longstanding policy thing that needed to be cleaned up. So, thank you for that.
Thank you for the clarification, Marty. Yeah, that's a key point. Uh, the school committee policies are not changing. And yeah, just cleaning up, making sure the charter and the school committee policies are consistent. All right, moving on, uh, advertising on school grounds. Marty, are you gonna take this one?
So you have a, in your packet, a, a bylaw that was passed at the town meeting on Sunday, May sixteenth. And the bylaw would allow for, uh, sponsorship on, um, town-owned fields, summarizing the, the bylaw. The, the bylaw, like any town bylaw, needs to be reviewed and approved by the attorney general's office. So at this point, this is simply a, a bylaw that was approved at town meeting. It is undergoing review by the attorney general's office and, and so therefore it's not in effect currently. Uh, it's come to you because the, there is, uh, the, the Long Metal Football Association has asked if the committee would consider the possibility of extending the provisions of this bylaw to the field that is under the purview of the school committee, specifically the stadium field uh, between the high school and the tennis courts. The other fields are under the purview of the town. Uh, but this bylaw, if it were approved by the attorney general's office, would not be extended to the stadium field. And so I don't know that any action is needed tonight by the school committee other than to let you know that the request has come to you from the, the football association. Wondering if it's possible to extend, uh, the provisions of this bylaw to the, to the field under the purview of the school committee. There is also a question on, on your own policies regarding public solicitation and advertising, and those are in your packet. The question of whether or not your existing policy would allow for the placement of advertising signage. So the way it's been interpreted to date is that uh, your policy does not permit advertising signage on the fields or in the spaces that are under your purview. But, uh, a resident has asked us to consider whether or not, in fact, your policy would allow for that. Again, this is a, you know, this is a, it's a significant issue, I'd say. It may not, it doesn't require action tonight. Certainly, uh, that's, that's your discretion, whether or not you'd like to act on it in some way. Uh, so it, it could be informational, it could just be, uh, an initial discussion for future consideration. But because it, really that, that bylaw, again, won't be in effect until an if and when it's approved by the attorney general's office. So that's the best background I can provide and, and, um, if you have any questions or, or need any other clarification, certainly we can help you out with that. Mr. Maz is well informed on this topic as well. So.
Thank you, Marty. And, and just before we get to Suzie and Jamie, just one, one question that I want to make sure we clarify. So on the article that was voted in the town meeting, it says Wolf Swamp Fields, Bliss Park, Turner Park. Who, who is in charge of Russell Fields? Because this, we're talking about the stadium field, but Russell Field, is that under our control as well? That's under the parks' control. So it, it should say here, Russell Field. Well, it says, but not solely limited to. So, so the reality is they are in control of Russell Field. We don't need to worry about that now or in the future because it's not us. It is just a stadium. And it's not like the tennis courts or any of that stuff. It's just a stadium. Okay. All right, excellent. Thank you for the clarification. Uh, let's start with, or Tom, go ahead.
Just one.
Can Tom unmute, please?
Sorry, I thought it was. I was just saying there is also the field on the corner of Grassy Gutter and Bliss that also may at some point, uh, be a consideration for if there is advertising allowed on school, uh, grounds.
Thank you, Tom. All right. So this is, that's the key. We have two fields under our control, the stadium field and the other field on the, the corner of Grassy Gutter and Bliss. Okay, excellent. Thank you. Uh, Jamie, please start us off.
That was, Tom, I guess my, my just one extension to that question. I assumed it meant that field as well. What about our other schoo, which, which fields at our schools? Is that the only ones or is Williams up for discussion and like all these, I, I know they probably aren't as big a priority, but like where, which ones are under our purview, I guess?
Yeah. Jamie, you are correct. The fields at Williams, behind Glenbrook are also under the school committee uh, purview. They are designated school property. So I would say yes, they would be. I don't know that they've, uh, hosted high school level athletic events, but I know they do use them for youth and other activities.
Thank you, Jamie. Thank you, Tom. Suzie, go ahead.
Yeah, so I have a couple of questions. First, has this been brought to the policy subcommittee yet? And should it be? Okay, that's number one. Number two, will it be reviewed by our attorney? Um, for, so that there can be, you know, if, if there's any sort of gray area that they can give us some sort of direction on that. The policy subcommittee may, may want to have that take place. I don't know.
Uh, love the suggestion of the, the, the policy subcommittee and I think it's, makes a lot of sense to direct this to our attorney as well. When you say directed to the attorney, are, are we talking about, um, the town bylaw or our existing policies to determine what sort of?
Right. The request is coming to us, it sounds like, under the guise of this town bylaw. That, oh, now that the town is allowing for this, this, the school should allow for this. So this resident has brought to us a, a desire to essentially change our own policies because of the town policy. And I, I'm trying to understand. I think we have to get a recommendation from the policy subcommittee as to whether or not it would be a good idea to move this in any way, shape, forward. The other thing I think that's important to consider in this, and this can be something that the policy subcommittee addresses, hopefully, is that the track is also part of that. And the track was just named for, you know, John Devine. Um, I don't know if there was anything written in that, um, decision that, uh, you know, precludes any sort of, um, you know, advertising or anything like that. So I just, I just think all of it needs to be reviewed in a more comprehensive manner. Um, to ensure that if we're gonna make a policy change predicated on this move by the town, but then also a request of a resident, we want to make sure we have all of the information necessary because it could have a domino type effect as Tom indicated for other areas. And that's fine. And I mean, it, it, if that's the way the school committee decides to go, it's just we need to be prepared for it. That's all.
Thank you, Suzie. Um, Bronwyn, go ahead.
Uh, I definitely think, uh, what Suzie said in, um, terms of having policy sub review this would be helpful. One question, um, that I was wondering if policy sub might be able to, um, get an answer to and, and discuss is once we change the policy, if, if, if we did do that, um, is it then like anyone can put up a sign or do, who desires so? I mean, would they have to come to us to get approval? Each time or could just, uh, like how, how would that work? I know, I don't think, I don't know if anyone has the answer to that now. But I think that's an important question that, for me, it's an important question. Just trying to find out one, if, if it does go through. Um, you know, what happens after that? Is it just, anything goes or does stuff come to us for approval? Thanks.
Yeah, I think that's a key point. And in the, the bylaw, it looks like all of those go through the park and rec board for the ones that are approved by the bylaw, right? So um, yeah, it'd be interesting to see what we come up with with our policy sub. And, and, and one, one question that I had and, and Dagan, this may be to you, um, youth football plays on the stadium field, don't they?
Yeah, so actually on Sunday, I was actually at my brother's eighth grade game on the stadium field. So yes, they both use the Williams field for practices and JV games for their level, which is like the younger grades. And then I believe their varsity level uses the game field, uses the stadium field.
Yeah, thank you, Dagan. And, and my only point is that it's, we have groups using the stadium fields who are not LHS students, right? Like it's possible that we have a rec, park and rec game at the stadium field. And so I just think it's important to recognize, like, we're not talking about just high school games going on. We're talking about potentially games that are not park or rec. Tom, you look like you don't think that's really going on.
No, I, I do agree. I think there are, there's definitely youth football. There might even be some youth soccer in the past that has used the stadium on occasion, but it's, I don't think it's, uh, every weekend or I think it's very sporadic.
Right. But I think I could imagine that our policy group could come up with policy for high school athletes that could be different than policy for younger athletes. I think that's maybe the point I'm trying to make is that when our policy subcommittee looks at this, let's not just assume it's only high school athletes who are using that field. Um, Mary, go ahead.
Um, so I, I noticed that the funds raised, I'm assuming would go to Parks and Rec? Or is it because it's on school grounds that the funds would go to our athletic department or on, or public schools or?
I, I think that's another question for the policy subcommittee. Again, the, the bylaws say what you just said, which is the money goes to park and rec. Uh, I think our policy subcommittee could say if it's on a school field, then it should go to the school athletic. Right? Again, I think that's another, another question for the policy subcommittee. Suzie, go ahead.
And I think the fundamental question first is, should we do it? I mean, that's, that's what the, the policy subcommittee would be charged with. You know, coming up with a determination, is this worth our time? So there may need to be some, um, um, what do we, uh, you know, just research done, um, with other school districts that have allowed this. Um, just to get us, and maybe that's where you'd get some more information from our attorney as well. Um, and other policies that may have been developed. But I, I think there needs to be a, the, the fundamental question is first, should we policy?
And Marty, can you, I think you, you already mentioned this, but I just want to make sure that we all understand. I, I think that you said there's not a, a huge rush on this because we're still waiting for the state to make some sort of statement on this. But, um, I, I mean, I think we need to move on it, but you're saying we're not under time pressure to get this done with, before next meeting or something along those lines. Is that right?
That is correct. If you would like to move along at the same pace as the town on this. If, if, if as a committee, you felt like you wanted to, you know, kind of, um, either explicitly permit or explicitly not permit advertising, you, you can do that before the town hears anything from the A G's office. As, as it is now, and I just want to get, make sure I'm clear on this in terms of the committee's um, understanding or intent, as it is now, we, we do not permit the types of advertising that the town bylaw would permit. And so that's, that's been our standing interpretation of your policy. So if, if that is not correct, I would say that the policy sub should move sooner rather than later on this issue. But that's our, that's our, you know, currently if someone approached us and said, can I put this banner up on the fence at on one of the fields that we identified, we would, we would decline because we would say the policy does not permit that. If, so if the committee wanted to change that, then I would say assemble the policy sub sooner rather than later and, and don't wait for the, the town bylaw feedback to come. So.
So other comments or questions? I guess my, my take on this is, I, I really would like this to be on the agenda for the policy subcommittee because I, I, I think in some form this is going to come, I mean, it's already come to us. And, and I think that it's a, it's something that we should take up. That's my personal opinion and I hope that that can go on the agenda for the policy subcommittee. I see a thumbs up from Jamie. I see others thumbs up. Um, okay, so I think we're good to have this on the policy agenda. Marty, you good with that?
Okay.
Um, all right. I think we are good with that item on the agenda. And the next item is, uh, and we essentially already talked about this, the Select Board Racial Justice Task Force Report. Um, again, I just want to encourage folks who may not have taken a look at that to take a look at it. It's a, it's a, an excellent report. Uh, and something that we can build on as we work on our diversity, equity and inclusion, uh, work over the coming year. All right. I think we are to a possible motion for executive session.
And before we do that, I just ask for, um, point of the case for the folks who are listening at home, who might not to read this as well. What is the easiest way to find it?
Yeah, Nicole, thank you for that. So the question is, how do folks find the, um, Racial Justice Task Force Report? Um, if you go to the town website, you can find it on the town website. Um, so yeah, I think that is currently the easiest way to find it. So I think I'm seeing some people nodding in agreement. But Nicole, thank you for that, for that point.
I recommend a motion. Uh, I move that the school committee meeting and executive session. So it's not a lot up to thirty A, respect by one A purpose to to conduct a strategy session in preparation with collective bargaining with units A, B, C, D, E, F, H, and purpose seven consideration on release executive session minutes of previous meetings to not reconvene into open session.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, and again, just as a reminder, this is that we will not reconvene into open sessions. So this will end the open portion of the meeting. Any discussion? We will have a roll call vote. Nicole?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Jamie? Jamie, say it with mute off. Yes. And yes for me. Uh, so we are adjourned for the open session. Thank you, everybody. We will see you in two weeks.